Good evening. Welcome to the May 14th, 2018 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Lee Bogle will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heaven and Father, we thank you for this time that you bring us here this evening. We ask that you watch over God's decisions as we go through the business of the county and decisions and discussion tonight will be positive and have a pleasing to you. And we ask that you watch over all that is discussed this evening. Herefore, we ask you to watch over our country. We ask you to watch over those that govern this country. And that you watch over our state and local leaders and that decisions that they make and the topics that we discuss will be a pleasant and pleasing to you as well. Herefore, we ask you to watch over our emergency responders, our military, and all those who put themselves in harm's way for us on a daily basis in this state. We ask that you do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Caller, roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. David Jones. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Pettis Reed. Mike Bott. Jeff Phillips.
President.
Have a form.
Thank you, Gail. This time, we need to review and approve the minutes of our February 26 meeting. I'll call on Vice Chair Mike Kush.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those minute, those meeting minutes, wow, and they are in order, and I would make a motion to approve and accept those to the archives.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion to approve the minutes from February 26, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. No items withdrawn or deferred, right into new business. Item 6A, items that are submitted for a final plat approval. Item 17-2072, Alameda subdivision. This is reapproval of 62 residential lots, two retention, detention lots, one step lot on 40.34 acres, zoned RM located off Manchester Highway. JJ&amp;F Partnership is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, Commission members. Hope everybody's doing well today. The preliminary plan for this development was approved at the Planning Commission's September 26, 2016 meeting. The final plat was approved at the October 23, 2017 meeting. Final plat approvals are valid for six months. This has lapsed, that approval, so this, basically, they're just coming back tonight to ask for reapproval. I will point out that this does include an offsite soils waiver. As you recall, there was some property to the north of this that was relying on an offsite soils on one of the subdivision lots that was already in existence. This isn't new. It was already that way. It was already on the property. There was an existing offsite easement, but with the subdivision of this property, it became necessary to grant a waiver to that, which was granted previously. So, the plat's in order. It's really just a matter of it expiring. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion and a second for the reapproval of Alameda subdivision. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B, these items are scheduled for public hearings, and they are for rezoning request. 6B1, item 18-8010, Good Shepherd's Children Home, Children's Home by Randall Grabey, located 213 Double Springs Road. Commission district is four. The county commissioner is Robert P. Size of the site is approximately 1.7 acres. Tax map 103. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG, commercial general. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Information provided by the applicant and the letter that they provided with their application is located in your agenda packets on your iPads. Indicate they wish to purchase additional land in the county to build a new facility, which is currently located adjacent to the subject property. They would like to sell the existing property and zone it commercially in order to maximize its value. This is a speculative rezoning. The property actually, the applicant actually has an application going to our Board of Zoning Appeals next month for some property in the county along Midland-Fosterville Road, just for your information on that. No uses have been identified on this particular application, nor has a concept plan been included with your agenda materials. The property currently has access to Double Springs Road. Should this application be approved, the site plan submittal will be required for Planning Commission review and approval. Any new development would also need to be constructed to current count, excuse me, current county standards. Any proposed access to John Bragg Highway, being a state highway, would also require TDOT approval. They are asking for commercial general zoning, which is required to install a type-two buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Any outdoor storage, if there were to be any, would also have to be appropriately screened, and we would see that with a landscape plan that would be included with the site plan submittal. And it would also be required to adhere to those performance standards we have in the zoning ordinance. There are several factors that would support this rezoning. The property is located within the general urban character area and is also located along an urban-style arterial, as identified on the comprehensive plan, which is John Bragg Highway. Property directly across John Bragg from this property was rezoned late last year to the same classification being proposed in this application, and it's also located in close proximity to the Murfreesboro city limits, and there's a copy of the city's zoning map included with your agenda packets on your iPads. You'll see that it's in very close proximity to some commercial highway zoning, which is similar, not identical, but similar to the county's commercial general zoning classification. So, we feel that this area is beginning to transition into a more commercially-oriented area, and so we would recommend approval of the request. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for staff? Not at this time. I'll declare the public hearing open for item 18-8010, Good Shepherd's Children Home. Is the applicant available? Would you come forward, please? Please tell us a little bit about what you have in mind.
All right. Well, I appreciate you taking the opportunity to let us come present our case. As many of you know, the Good Shepherd Children's Home was established in 1962. The building that we were in was built in 1964. It was basically a bunker, a concrete bunker there, and over the years, we've seen thousands of kids come through there, and we've cared for them best we can. As that said, we have interest. Obviously, the city has kind of encroached upon us a little bit, and there are several factors that have had given us reason to potentially relocate the home, which is our desire. And so, we would like to, obviously, we are a 501(c)(3), and all of our funding comes through donations, so we like to maximize the value of the properties that we have. So, as we transition, if we can sell the properties that we currently have, there'll be a pretty good-sized portion of what we would need to relocate to an area on the south side of the county, towards the Shelbyville area. So, that's our intent, was just really to rezone that property into a commercial in order to increase the value of that for our pending move, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Grabey while he's up here? Give him a couple of minutes, okay?
This, yes, this is the one portion of the property we felt would be beneficial as a commercial property. The backside of this property is our main property. I think there's about nine acres there with our main facility. We have an 8,000-square-foot home there. And then, on the other side of Woodcraft, we also own, I'm thinking about seven or eight acres on that side. One has a residential home on it, and the other has a small gymnasium on it, so. But we're just looking to, once again, maximize kind of the value, and this one piece setting on John Bragg, we felt we'd be able to increase that value just by the rezoning.
Thank you. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 18-8010 for the Good Shepherd Children's Home. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B2, 18-8011, Land Questor LLC by Larry Gilliland. Location is 290 Rucker Road. Commission district is six. County commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 100 acres. Tax map 149. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development for Residential Subdivision. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Rucker Road. The applicant is proposing to develop a 246-lot residential subdivision on the property, which would be composed of 239 standard lots and seven estate lots. The estate lots, as you see on the concept plan, would be located along Rucker Road. I would also point out, for your information, that a copy of the pattern book is uploaded on your iPads, and we have a copy of it here to put on the screen if need be as well. The overall density for this development is about 2.5 units per acre. The minimum lot size is proposed to be 7,200 square feet. This is outside of the estate lots. Estate lot homes would be a minimum of 2,400 square feet in size. The standard lot homes would be a minimum of 1,600 square feet. They are showing front setbacks of 35 feet, rear of 20, if I remember correctly, and sides of 10 feet. All lots would be for purchase, and the plan does incorporate an amenities program, which we'll talk about here in just a minute, which does include a playground and large usable open space. Estates and standard lots also include a minimum brick masonry percentage, again, which is outlined in the pattern book, again, which can be found on your iPads. The proposed layout does show two traffic, I'm sorry, two separate connections to Rucker Road. There is also, when you look on the pattern book and when you look at the concept plan and actually on the screen that Mike has up, you can see the two access points off of Rucker, and then there's a third access point to the Colonial Estates subdivision, which actually we just see, we just saw the final plat for that submitted to our office for that connection to be made, as well as another connection to property along the south boundary, which is to the west of the Colonial State subdivision. A traffic study was completed for this development, which identifies proposed improvements to Rucker Road as part of this project. A copy of the conclusions and recommendations were also included with your agenda packets. I'll defer to Mike to discuss that a little bit more when we're finished with this. Beyond the open space areas shown on the proposed master plan, we're not seeing any additional landscape buffering on this particular plan development, which is not unusual. Residential subdivisions don't typically require landscape buffers. The amenity package for the development does show a total of about 13 acres of open space, with 11 of those being usable. The applicant is proposing a playground and open area on the eastern, southeastern portion of the property, which would be constructed during Phase 4 of the project. We had some discussions with the applicant's design team regarding this, and, Mike, if you could pull up the, oh, is that it? Okay, I'm sorry. We had some concern about just the location of that being kind of tucked away. Now, they have made some changes to that, you can see, and the applicant may want to speak more to this. Originally, when you look at the area, it was kind of tucked behind those lots. There were, there was no way, really, the only way, there was a small access in the little elbow of the road right there. What he's done, he's actually taken out one of the residential lots right through there. He's added a small parking area, and has provided a little bit more detail as far as, you know, what kind of facilities will be at that particular area, like a picnic area, playground, those kind of things. They also identify a potential location for one near the step system. They opted with this one right here, just due to the location of it. They felt this would be preferable to being right next to the step system, but again, I'll let the applicant discuss that a little bit more detail. And for performance standards, seeing that this is a residential development, there aren't any that are required for residential developments. There was a neighborhood meeting on this application prior to submittal, which is required by our zoning ordinance for planned developments. It was a very well-attended meeting. Most of the concerns centered on the traffic along Rucker Road and the compatibility of the project with the existing area. There's also discussion on the proposed connection to the Colonial Estates subdivision to the south. Several of the neighbors who lived in the adjacent subdivision, Applewood, right to the west of this property, had concerns about the traffic coming out of Colonial Estates up through Rucker Road in that area. There was also, of course, concerns about the drainage of the property and those kind of things, but again, I'll let Mike make a few brief comments on that prior to the public hearing being opened. From staff standpoint, we do see several factors that would support rezoning of the property. The property is located within the suburban belt character area. The density that they're proposing is consistent with the recommendations made by the comprehensive plan. They are getting more lots out of this than they could out of just a conventionally-zoned RM development. The applicant estimates they could probably get around 185 units out of this development if we're just a straight RM-zoned subdivision, whereas they're getting 246 right now with the estate lots as well. So, they are getting a little bit more lot yield out of that, but still, those particular densities are still consistent with what's recommended in the plan, which in the suburban belt area is no greater than three per acre. The lots are smaller than those in the surrounding area, but there is an amenities package that would not be required if this property were developed as well under the conventional zoning. Utilizing the step system would also allow the developer to construct homes on the minimum lot size in the RM, 15,000 square feet, without any real control over design, minimum size, or anything like that. All that being said, we do recognize that traffic is a concern and drainage as well, and those are things that we do take seriously and have been looking into. With that, I'll let Mike make a few comments on that.
The applicant did have a full-blown traffic study done for this development, and what they recommended, that, a couple of things, the connections on Rucker Road will just be one-way in, one-way out. They felt with two connections, it was enough to split the traffic up, so they did not have to have a dedicated left and right coming out of each way. The next thing was the evaluation of the Rucker and 231. What they found out, it's the flow of traffic on Rucker was not the issue. It was the intersections such as Rucker and 231. So, what they found, that if they add a dedicated right-turn lane coming west on Rucker, turning and to allow northbound traffic to flow to the north, that will alleviate a lot of the problem right now and will not be an issue with the first phase. But they're saying that approximately 50 lots or more than that, a traffic signal will be required at the Rucker and 231. So, they are working with Davenport Station, which is across the street. They have dedicated already that they will be, once they make this connection on, let's see, Burnley Way, that they will install their portion of the intersection traffic signal with this leg, the new leg coming into 231. Now, the Rucker Landing will be required to do their approach and their portion, the lights on their side, to facilitate the whole coordination of this movement. So, that's what we're going to be working with. But as far as the first phase, they, with the dedication, the construction and dedication of a right-turn lane coming onto 231, allowing traffic to flow to the north, should be enough to alleviate the first phase. Anything past 50 lots will require traffic signal. As far as drainage, we have talked extensively with the design team, the design engineers about this, and they are aware of the challenges there. There's a couple culverts crossing the railroad. This is the railroad track here, and it is an elevated track, so water that flows to the west, excuse me, to the east from the west, has to go under a couple culverts, and this is one of them here. So, we'll have them evaluate stormwater runoff rate and volume, so that they will not impact the adjacent neighbors, won't impact the houses in this development. Some of the houses will need to be elevated around the perimeter of the pond area, just for local drainage concerns. I don't believe they're in a FEMA flood zone. Just double-check. No, they're in Zone X. It'll be localized drainage conditions that we will have to work with the design team on, but, like I said, we've been working with the design team on the very beginning, and they are aware of the challenges that this development will encompass. And I'll try to answer any other questions if you might have.
Okay, Mike. This, coming down Rucker Road and turning back toward Murfreesboro, they're going to go ahead and build a right-turn lane?
They're going to build a right-turn lane to allow right-turn traffic to flow north onto 231.
Yeah, 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 okay. Okay, okay, turning left toward the school, that's where it's going to be a lot of traffic going in the morning toward the school.
Right. What we'll probably have them do is have a dedicated right and left turn lane. What they found, most of the traffic was going north in the mornings from Rucker, and they did have a portion going to the south towards the school, but with the dedicated right turn and left turn lane, that should alleviate the backup that's experienced right there at Rucker and 231.
Okay, when they get on the southbound part going toward the school, will, before they get a red light, now, this is definitely going to fast-track the red light.
Yes, sir.
It's fast-track that.
It's going to accelerate it because Davenport Station's pushing the limits right now.
Yeah, yeah, and this will put, this will put it over top.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, will they need an acceleration lane before they get the red light going back toward the school?
Towards the school in the median, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Possibly, possibly. We'll look at that with the design engineers and the transportation, traffic engineers on that.
If you had the red light, you wouldn't need that, but...
Right, right. It'll be, the red light will have protected turns, left and right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To allow the traffic to flow freely without having to merge and whatnot.
But for some reason, that's, it gets on slow-mo, getting, hitting the traffic light, that acceleration lane.
Right. We'll definitely work with the design engineers for both developments and their transportation engineer, and then also TDOT. Since it's 231, it's a TDOT road, we'll have to get coordination through them.
Mike, now, my understanding, the developers are on board with being involved in this.
Yes, sir. They're fully aware of that, and they've got a copy of the transportation study, traffic study, and it, you know, it outlines, okay, you're good. If you build this right-turn lane going north, you should, you know, be able to handle the first 50 lots, and after that, you need a traffic signal.
I believe we discussed it, and the developers at Davenport Station know this, but the fact that this has accelerated that light, will that be a shared cost between Davenport and this one, or is this one going to take the brunt of it because it's going to get there first?
They'll have to do their light mass on their end facing Rucker.
About the north and south.
The north and south, we'll have to work with them on that. They, you know, Davenport Station's already agreed to install their portion of the light, but we'll, you know, we'll have to work with both development teams on that.
Any other questions? Why don't we hear from the applicant, and maybe we'll develop some more questions at that time. Is the applicant available? You got some more stuff?
Well, I just wanted to say a couple more things. Doug did mention they have added a connection to the last section of Colonial Estates here, and they've got another connection to this large parcel here, but they do not have a connection to Jonathan Way in Applewood subdivision because of the step system. The soils are in the way.
The applicant? Do you have a presentation or just comments? Good evening.
I do have a presentation. I also have the engineer who's working with us on this site, and she's sitting back there. But I wanted just to make a brief introduction of myself. My name's Larry Gilliland. I am the principal for Land Questor, who's the applicant for the project. I am a local guy. I've been around a long time. If you all see red Realty signs, then I was a founding partner for Red Realty, so I still stay very involved in that and in construction development and those facets of that. So, I do not live very far from the site. This is in my backyard, and I drive by it very, very often. I have lots of friends that live in the neighborhoods that surround that, back in Colonial Estates, and also over there in Apple Tree. In fact, one of my closest friends lives very, very close to it. So, what we wanted to do when we put this together and started working on this about a year and a half ago, is we wanted to do something that's quality, that really supports what's going on around it, and to be a good neighbor and a good friend out there to those people around us. We have, on the front of this, you'll see, there are seven estate lots. I intentionally did the estate lots so that I can mirror as closely as possible the houses that were across the street of the development. We were working with the county in order to connect back into Colonial Estates, and even with the playground placement. So, at the recommendation of the planning staff, we did order a full-blown traffic study. The traffic study company that performed the work for us is also the same company that did Davenport Station's. So, they're very familiar with it. We feel like we got a good traffic study that really highlighted the stoplight. The stoplight, there were some questions on that and how that will be shared with both the developments. The traffic study recommends that after our 50th CFO, by the time it would be issued at 50, that that stoplight should be in place. Our first section is at 49, so we know that that's coming, and we are prepared to do what we have to do with turning lanes and to make it good and safe. In the back, I'd like to introduce Linda Sullivan. Linda, if you'll come up here, please. Linda is with a local firm, it's called CIA. You may be familiar with her. She bought the Blankenship Building and has a good operation there, but she has done a good job putting this together. If you'll just introduce yourself, talk a little bit about traffic study.
Good afternoon. Linda Sullivan, CIA Engineers, and as Larry said, Gillian Fishbach did the traffic study, and she did Davenport Station. And it's very comprehensive, and Larry fully understands the need for the traffic light and the turn lanes and the coordination with TDOT. We've already talked to TDOT, and I think he's ready to do whatever we need to do to make it all work. And I've actually talked to the folks at Davenport Station, and they're selling lots and building houses like crazy, so I think they need it as much as Larry does. So, I think the timing is going to kind of work for both of them. So, I think the next thing we need to do, hopefully with a successful outcome tonight, is to meet with them and get together and get that part of it done. So, anyway. Any questions on the traffic study? Gillian couldn't be here tonight, so I'll try or pass them on to her.
I have a couple of questions. They're not necessarily about the traffic study. As I'm going through your plan booklet, I see that your drainage is through curb and gutter. I didn't see, and I may have just overlooked it, a mention of sidewalks.
No, there are no planned sidewalks. The county doesn't require them, and I think the concern is who would maintain them, maybe? them, maybe? And so we didn't do sidewalks and it's a very flat site and, um, so we have to do curb and gutter in order to collect the drainage and get the drainage where it needs to be. There's not a lot of room to do anything else.
The reason that I ask about that is always whenever we have a common area, I'm always concerned about how the folks are gonna get to it. And so are they gonna be walking in the street? That's my concern. Um, and I do, I, I recognize that there's smaller lots and so adding sidewalks, you know, um, you know, could be troublesome, but it might be beneficial for that community even if you just did it on one side, 'cause you've got almost 250 families that are gonna be, you know, utilizing that area. And then I, I also didn't see in the pattern book any mention of a homeowners association and that is required when you have a common area. So when you talk about maintenance, that could fall under the homeowners association, you know, as well. Um, and then Doug may answer this. I, also in the pattern book, I didn't see any specific commitments as it related to traffic. Um, we've talked about the traffic study and we've talked about what you've agreed to do through construction, but I didn't see any mention of it actually in the pattern book and maybe comfortable with it not being in there.
Well, and generally, uh, of course with a planned development, you can put commit conditions on that. So, I mean, obviously, part of our, part of the, uh, our regulations with traffic studies, you know, the developer's gonna be bound by those things that are identified in the traffic study, but I, I mean, if you wanna make it as a condition of approval, that those improvements that were, um, identified in the traffic study are part of the approval, then that's perfectly acceptable.
So what was your expectation about how folks were gonna get to that common area?
There's a parking lot. Um, that's why we did the entrance with parking spaces to help with that.
Yeah, I saw it was a small parking area. Uh, I, I can't tell how many spaces are there for the parking.
Like about, about 10. Right, I mean, there, there's room for a few more too, if need be.
And I am not an engineer and so, but I, I have been on this, um, um, commission for a while, so I've seen lots of plans. Um, the one piece of feedback I would just give you is, um, we always look for traffic calming opportunities because when you have long streets with lots of people traveling them, um, if there are opportu- opportunities for you to build into the design ways to prevent speeding, especially if you're not gonna have a sidewalk and they're, you're gonna have people in the streets, um, then there, I, I think it would be wise to have some opportunities for some kind of, um, traffic calming mechanism. Um, and then the, the main thing that I always look at in plans like this, especially when there's this many lots, um, is just the livability. And, and I love the design of the house. I think the price point, I think all that's terrific, but, um, I always want the neighborhood to age well and I, I want it to be livable long-term and those property values to hold, you know, long-term. And so those are just some of the things that I could see that could be a potential negative, um, to the community, so.
Right. You can see that we've created some turns, several turns before somebody could drive all the way through the subdivision. Um, you had to make one, two, one, two, three turns at least to, to not have one straight shot, um, because we knew that that would be a problem.
Also on those plans, and I appreciate what you're saying about the subdivision aging well, in real estate, the one call that we never wanna get is the call from that person that we worked with and helped them find their dream house and all of a sudden, they either can't sell it or they don't like the neighborhood that they're in. And, uh, we, in fact, I talk to our agents a lot about the Walmart test and that's when we're out at Walmart, we need to be prepared about someone that we've worked with or may know us, about them coming up to us and what they're gonna say. And I know you all, as commissioners, probably feel the same way. So, uh, on those plans that we intend, uh, there are front porches on most of the plans, they're kind of a craftsman style, so there, there's some front areas that, that they can enjoy that a little bit easier. And sidewalks, we, uh, I'm not opposed to sidewalks, not at all. The challenge was because of how flat the site was, just as far as how to incorporate that. But, but my hope for the development would be to be able to do that if it makes sense. So I, I appreciate that, Ron. Do y'all have any more questions or comments?
Yeah, I will echo what Commissioner House had. I, we, we just had a similar situation, I believe, on 269. Commissioner Reed brought me attention to that we approved here recently that had sidewalks on one side, not on both, but I too feel more comfortable, uh, with that large of a subdivision, that much activity of having some type of, of sidewalks available, uh, if it is just on one side, just to alleviate, uh, those types of homes potentially, or just that size of neighborhood is gonna lend itself to several, you know, families, young families probably with kids and definitely wanna see them to be able to enjoy their neighborhood and enjoy their bikes and such watch. Uh, so I too would feel a lot better to see some type of, uh, sidewalks implemented into this plan, uh, before I'd feel the most comfortable with it.
Anyone else? I would feel comfortable, if, if you all would feel comfortable with sidewalks on one side, then I would feel comfortable doing that. And at least that gets them back to the parks on, on both. So we do intend to put the HOA and to have them very involved. Uh, I'm a fan of HOAs. I was a fan of HOAs before they were required. So we will do that. We also do have a, a second area for an additional playground or just, uh, some green space. So, uh, what I'd like to do is put one nice playground in there with parking, with ample facilities for the kids to enjoy and parents and to leave the second one open to dedicate to the HOA. And as the subdivision grows and they become better funded, then that might be a resource for them to tap into later. But like I say, I'm open and I want to do something that's a quality project. It's just, as you all are aware, it's, it's, there's always a challenge with balancing the cost with the benefits that we're trying to provide and, uh, Rutherford County land is high right now and this, we had to step up for the site. So we're really working very hard to make it work.
This is dry, attention right here. And so they can throw football, do freebies, and then this is another unused space right here. It's just open, but the drip fields, the fence drip fields will be in here, so, um, you know, if there is anything wrong with the playground right here, absolutely not. Resolution on my iPad's not catching up, but, um, it looks like you, you left an access point to that area as well, yeah.
Any other questions at this time?
Just the last comment. But, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I guess thirdly suggest that sidewalks, at least on one side of the street, and, and from experience, particularly on a PUD like this, even though the regulations will probably say you cannot park in the street, what happens is when you get into tight development like this with short driveways and more than two drivers in the family, they'll park on the street, which then forces your children or anybody in the street to walk and that creates a real danger. So at least one side of the street, you guys pick what makes sense and, uh, if you can increase the public s- spacing in that approximately 10 lots down by the green space, or maybe a couple of pods of three or four spaces extra, I think that would be very beneficial. And it, it would be something that as people look and drive through that, to look at potential home purchase, they would see that as a positive. Sidewalks are always a big seller. I mean, people would much rather buy a home with a sidewalk than not, so I, I think it would, you're gonna get your money back out of it, so, thank you.
Other questions at this time?
Do you have one more? The wet pond that's in the back, is that an actual pond that stays, that holds water all the time? Yeah. Mike, do we have it?
Yes, that is a water quality feature. We follow the Metro Nashville stormwater standards and to meet the water quality portion of that, um, a lot of, a lot of times that there'll be a wet portion that helps the sediment drop out, uh, for the first flush storms. So that's what that is.
You guys stay close. This time I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this resounding request, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
I'm Gerald Lighty, 435 Rucker Road directly to the north. Concerns, someone said one way in, one way out. What does that, what does that mean?
You'll have, you'll have two lanes on each connection. There'll be a lane coming in and a lane going out.
Making provisions for left turn lane because we have a lot of traffic, emergency vehicle, sod trucks, school buses. If that's gridlocked going into, in and out there during rush hour, that's a concern.
Going into the subdivision, people will be making a right turn lane, um, coming from 231 side. That's what the traffic study indicated, that most of the traffic will be coming from the 231 side. I mean, a portion will be coming from the railroad track from the east side, uh, but what they indicated that, uh, at a turn lane was not needed for those. A left turn lane.
No plan on widening, widening that section of highway?
Yes. Well, it is on the county's long-term, uh, transportation plan. Um, that's something we, we will be updating hopefully in the future, but, uh, there will be right-of-way dedication with this, so when that, uh, plan does come to fruition, we al- we'll already have the right-of-way on this side of the development.
My other concern is, we had discussed at our previous meeting, you're gonna get a lot more traffic from the Druma Court from the south, egress out to 231 because it is considerably shorter. So not only do you have your 500 cars potentially from this development plus several hundred each day from the south.
Yes, and that, that was factored in, in the, the, uh, traffic study. They, they did, uh, assume that connection would be made.
My other concern is, which is even bigger scope, is obviously you all know about our school problem. They're overcrowded. You've taken 265 homes, let's assume half of them have children, across the road at the new development, 465 homes. What's the plan on dealing with the schools?
When we received this particular application, I sent a copy of the pattern book to the county central schools office for their comment. Uh, they did send a, a comment back to me saying that at this point, they didn't feel that anything would change in the short term for this area of Rucker Road and this area in general. And I understand with a development like this, a large development, you're not gonna wake up tomorrow and there's gonna be 250 new homes there, of course. Uh, so as time goes on, they'll just factor in the growth and, and we maintain communication with our schools office, but they'll evaluate every year and their budget needs as far as any new, uh, construction, as far as the school expansions, new school locations and whatnot. So they, they are aware of this development.
That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeff Kemp, I'm at, uh, 487 Rucker Road that's just to the north of this development. Um, I came in just a little late, so I apologize if I, if I missed something, but, uh, very concerned about Rucker Road and the size of Rucker Road. Uh, we have a commercial business to the northeast that, uh, is a sod business. We're currently experiencing trouble coming in and out of Rucker Road, uh, meeting these huge 18-wheelers. Uh, the lot, or the, the size of the road is so small, uh, that we just about have to get in the ditch to pass one of those guys when they come by. So I think that needs to be addressed regardless of what goes in on this piece of property. Uh, the other thing is that it's so narrow that most of our, uh, mailboxes have been hit. I've replaced mine twice. I know there's a couple of other people sitting here today that have replaced mailboxes. It is a narrow road. It's too narrow right now for what's going on there, much less development, uh, construction vehicles, uh, the things that it would take to, uh, do this development. Um, so I would really like to, for you guys to consider, uh, the size of Rucker Road. Uh, as far as going out to 231, the reason there's not a lot of, uh, traffic making the left going south on 231 is you can't turn out. At seven o'clock in the morning, you can't make that turn. So the traffic goes out, they cross the railroad tracks to the east, they work their way around and they go all the way down to 269 or the road just south of Christiana Middle School and they enter 231 there, especially if they're going to the school. Uh, I go out and go south sometimes that morning, uh, some mornings I go out and go that direction and it is almost impossible to make that turn out. It's almost impossible to, to take the right turn to the north. Um, you sometimes have to take your life in your own hand just to get on the road right there. So the red light is, is way behind. It needs to be done immediately regardless of what's being done at Davenport Station or the development on Rucker Road. Um, I'm very concerned about the lot sizes being smaller than the county, uh, minimum for this development. Um, I feel like this piece of property has been purchased and it has a water retention problem in the north end, northeast end of the property. Uh, I think that's why the large pond is in that, that area. Uh, so they're trying to squeeze in more houses to make more profit. Uh, and I'm, I'm all for people making money. I hope the people who sold the property made a good profit and I hope Mr. Gillian, uh, makes some profit, but I'm not here, uh, hoping that he makes a ton of money off this by squeezing more houses into a piece of property that needs to be there. And I think you guys need to take that under consideration. Um, they, they just admitted that the small, their, their lot sizes were small. You asked them about sidewalks and said the, they said the reason, the, the engineer said the reason that they're not there is 'cause it's too small. Um, there needs to be sidewalks in this, in this neighborhood. My, my concern with the parking on the street, uh, is the same that I think was mentioned earlier. You can pass any neighborhood on 231 where there's Indian Hills, where there's Savannah Ridge and you'll see people parked in the, on, on the sides of the road. And those are neighborhoods that have good-sized lots. Uh, when you have these short driveways, these families are gonna have at least two cars. Most of them will have four to five cars when we talk about a family with kids. And those cars are gonna end up in the street and it is gonna be dangerous. I know they put some curves in the neighborhood, but there's still some very long stretches there and it's gonna be really easy for someone to get hurt. Uh, so I guess, uh, to wrap up what I wanted to say was just make sure we take a look at the road size on Rucker. It's dangerous already. I have two, two girls at 18 and 20 and we've been there for three years now and we have been very nervous with them traveling and out this road. We actually go out of our home, which my home is one of those roads to the north right there. We make a left on Rucker and go around Rucker Christiana to Joby Jackson, uh, because it's just not safe. We send our children that way to school. Uh, I'm also concerned, there was some concern brought up about schools. I'm concerned about the schools. I'm obviously out of the school business, mine just graduated, um, but we did not send our kids to public schools there because we did not like the quality or the size of the schools. Uh, our kids actually went to Middle Tennessee Christian. Uh, so I think the schools do need to be addressed very quickly and I think you guys need to take another look at the size of the lots that's being allowed in this, uh, in this development. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mike, I know you talked pretty extensively about traffic, but, um, help me through it again one more time, 'cause I know typically we only require a developer to improve the portion of the road that fronts his property, but there's been a commitment here to improve all the way down to 231, yes?
No, no. What they're proposing to do, they will, they will add shoulders along a Rucker on the estate lots and then they will install a right turn lane to allow traffic to flow to the north and we'll also ask them to dedicate a left turn lane coming, uh...
That was the section I was curious about. So they're gonna have to purchase that right- So, they're going to have to purchase that right-of-way? They're going to have to purchase that land to make those turns happen?
There potentially might be enough there. We'll have to look at that. But yes, if it's required that, let's see, right now we're showing approximately 53 feet. So, it's possible they might have to purchase some land to make it work. But they've got all this in the state's right-of-way to work as well. So, I mean, there's room in here for the turn lane and then also some storage and a taper.
And at what point will that be done?
First phase.
That's going to be done?
This comes in with the first phase.
Done right-of-way?
Yes.
So, the piece that we're waiting on is the traffic light, and that's it?
Yes. That will come with the second phase.
Or lot 50?
Yes.
Do we need any of the traffic improvements documented in the pattern book? Or is it fine that those are just in the minutes to the meeting?
I don't know if it necessarily is being the pattern book. Like I said, if you want to make it as a condition of approval, then I mean, it'd be easy for them to add it in. But if it's a condition of approval, it would be on the record. So, I think that's acceptable.
But especially it's not shown where the estate lots are. It's not, I didn't see a turn lane there, a widening there of the portion that actually touches their property.
Right. Well, I mean, they'd be adding four feet of shoulder and whatever right-of-way dedication that they would be required to do, right? But I mean, if you want to, that's perfectly fine if you want to make that a condition. It is listed on the conclusions and recommendations as far as the shoulder along the frontage of those estate lots. So, I mean, again, that's just incorporated into part of the record. But if you're more comfortable with that as part of the pattern book, then we can, and we've done that with other pattern books in the past. There was one, I'm trying to remember which one it was, but where they actually listed specifically. And we can just say, you know, the conclusions and recommendations made on the traffic study dated, you know, whatever the date of it is. We can, March 2, 2018, we can add that in. That's not a problem.
Do we need to see another pattern book that includes sidewalks? If we're going to make that as a condition? Or is that just something you can manage from construction meetings?
I personally would like to see that as part of the pattern book because that's a pretty significant change. Not only will they add the sidewalk, but because due to the step tanks and things they want to use, they'll have to amend the setbacks. Utilities and things. So, that's probably enough that I definitely would want to see that in there.
So, then would it be appropriate to defer until we see an updated pattern book?
If you would like to do that, that's certainly appropriate. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Give everyone else a chance to make comments while I ponder that?
No questions, comments?
Davenport and this, what could be the fast track on stoplight? What are we looking at here? I mean, when Davenport's working, they're beating rocks and moving dirt like crazy, and then this one will be coming on. And the gentleman's right, they do need the stoplight. And Rucker Road isn't a road. I don't know what his long-range plan is. What'd you say the long-range plans was on Rucker Road?
It's for, what was termed under the older plan as two-lane with shoulders, which is fairly similar to what a common county road is right now. But it could also be like a three-lane type cross-section, just wider shoulders.
Is it on radar for anything?
As far as being constructed, like a redo of the road? No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Back to the stoplight, yeah. What's the fastest they, we could get a stoplight?
They, right now they're working on, there's a substantial hill on their side. I'll turn on the contours. It'll turn on. Right here, you can see the bare earth. They're trying to bring that down to make it usable. So, they have to bring this area down. But they are working towards that. They're on section three right now. And I think, let's see. I don't know if it's the next phase or the Phase 3.2 or whatever will be coming out here to this Rucker intersection. So, it's not far off.
We know it's coming.
Yes, sir.
Davenport knows it's coming. We know it's coming over here. Even though they're not ready for cars to come out of Davenport.
Right.
Why couldn't we just go ahead and a little faster track on this?
Well, I guess it's a balancing act. Traffic signals, intersections are extremely expensive. I guess they, we haven't released any lots yet in Davenport Station. They're working on three phases. We've yet to release one lot for them to build on yet. So, they put a lot of money into this, but they haven't got any out. So, they're hoping to, you know, take that hill down like they said. And then as the lots, additional lots come in, they'll make that connection. So, right now, they only have Davenport Drive coming in. So, there's a limit on the number of lots that we will allow to come out on Davenport Station. There are about that time, this next phase will say you need to make that connection and make that traffic signal. So, it's probably going to be this year when we see the plans for that section. So, it's not long. Things are happening fast. They're wanting to start selling lots on section one and start making money because they put all this money into it and they haven't received, you know, got any out of it yet.
Mike, I don't want to seem insensitive to what you just said because I know it's a huge investment when they take on a project this size. Would it be worthwhile to have a conversation with them and Mr. Gilliland if they're going to partner on this light anyway? And just see if we can't get them voluntarily?
Yes. We can set that up. I mean, we work daily with Dwight O'Neill at Davenport Station. We, you know, we're contacting him all the time. And we can definitely, you know, both of them sit down in the room and, you know, talk this out.
And I guess part of what I'm thinking is, just like we talked about the parks and the sidewalks, making things livable, making traffic improvements.
Right.
That's a huge marketable feature to those communities. So, if people buying those homes knew that that was already in place, that would have a huge impact, I would think, in motivation to want to live there.
Okay. We can definitely make that happen there. Probably set it up this week, maybe next week.
For the time being, I would like to make a motion that we defer action on this PUD until we see a revised pattern book that includes the sidewalks that would reflect the changes and setbacks and sort of the ripple effect of all of that, so.
Motion and a second to defer basically for a month. Mr. Gilliland, do you think you could have that new pattern book out by next month's meeting? Okay. 30 days.
If they can do it sooner, if they can do it before the next planning commission meeting, I'm comfortable with that. I don't necessarily want to force them to wait 30 days. If they can do it sooner, I would be happy. I think this group would be happy to hear it at our next meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've had the public hearing here tonight. There'll be another public hearing, you know, for the Board of Commissioners. So, I mean, if you want to handle it that way, if they can get it done within the next couple of weeks, then we could bring it to the May 29 planning commission meeting for your approval, up or down. That way, that would at least keep them on schedule. Because if it's deferred into next month for this meeting, then they won't be able to go to the Board of Commissioners until August because the Board of Commissioners doesn't meet in July. So, if you're comfortable with that. I will say historically, it's not required. But historically, you would bring it back to the next night meeting. But there's nothing wrong with taking it to the day meeting if that's what you're comfortable with.
Without a public hearing?
Correct.
Mr. Gilliland, did you understand all of those dates? If you would summarize those again for us, Doug, so we'll know exactly what's going on.
As I understand, and obviously Commissioners, please correct me if I'm wrong. The motion was to defer this application until the next planning commission meeting, which would be on May the 29th, in order for the applicant to amend the pattern book to show sidewalks on at least one side of the road, to put information into the pattern book regarding the HOA as well as the proposed traffic improvements that were identified in the traffic study that was identified, or that was provided, excuse me, by the applicant. I believe that were, those were the highlights, if I remember correctly. Is that?
So, that would actually go before one of the county commission meetings in June?
Yes. It would, this would still, we would still go ahead and advertise this for the normal June meeting, the one that's on the second Thursday. I believe it's the 14th. So, if for some reason something happens and it's deferred again, we would just send notices and take it off the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody understand what's happening? Okay. Very good. So, we have a motion and a second to defer. Item 18-A011 by Mr. Gilliland. Any other questions? Ready to vote on that motion? All those in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Opposition? The motion to defer carries. Thank you. I'd like to do a little editorial. Maybe I shouldn't, but my heart goes out to the residents of this county who are feeling the pain that our exponential growth is causing us as citizens. Not just you that are there, but us as citizens all over. It takes 30 minutes or more to get from MTSU to the avenue. And our projected number of people that live in this county is about 320,000 at this time. The growth projections over the next 20 to 25 years, which sounds like a long time away, but it's not, will be 650,000 people. Developments like this is what this planning commission is looking at to make much better use of the land that this county has left. These planned units, we have certain control over. Residential development that's already RM, we have very little control over. So, the type of houses and the amenities that goes with those houses is probably the wave of the future for Rutherford County. And your participation in that process and your concerns in that process goes a long way. We can't build schools fast enough. Our road system is years behind right now. Try to imagine the cost that this county is going to be faced over the next 25 years if our population doubles. We're going to have to hunker down and figure out a way to coexist with the new people that are coming in, which means more schools are imaginable. Building and improving roads. And the county commission needs to hear from you guys, the citizens of the county, as to what is on your priority list so that the county commission will know how to address those needs short-term, medium-term, and long-term. Get involved in that election process. We're in the middle of an election season right now. My 10 cents worth for whatever that's worth, you guys. But this commission, speaking for this commission, appreciates the time that you put in and being involved in this process. It makes us as a commission make much better decisions. Thank you for being here. And I know the developer, from some conversations that I've had with him, appreciates the input that you guys have had as well. Mr. Chairman? Got a pretty tough job. And the efforts that he's making to improve are based solely upon how we feel, but a lot of input to us from you. Yes, Jeff?
I just want to say, I appreciate your comments. And I thought a lot about just some of the things that have come out here in the last few days in the news around property taxes and how it's impacting the other people of the county. And, you know, you as Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Kusch, Commissioner Reed, definitely have a lot before you. And of course, it is an election year. Without going off into a big tangent, because it's not for tonight, but, you know, I've been on the commission now almost five years, and I still have grave concerns about managing our growth. Some of it we can control. But some, it's going to take, to me, more conversations and more collaboration with the city as well because we're directly proportional tied to them. And if we have one mindset and they have a different, we're never going to come to the conclusion that we want to see. And ultimately, I believe we'll be disappointed over the next 20 to 25 years with where we're at. We can't not keep building schools. The two biggest things to me, and I learned this at early age watching my dad serving the state legislature, and transportation was one of his biggest things. And it was the key to growth and development. Our roads are not fit for what we're planning. And I don't have the answer. So, I don't sit here and by no means seem like I'm upset or griping that, because I don't have the answer. But at some point in time, we've got to look at measures. And we've looked at traffic sheds. We've looked at all these different things, but we've yet to do anything. To me, if we're going to get where we want to be, we've got to put our words into action at some point. We may fail. But I'd much rather do that, trying to do what we think's best, than just continually, and I hate to use the word rubber stamp because I don't think that's what we do. I think PUDs and having the control that we do to better put in place what we do is definitely on point. And I appreciate every Commissioner here and what we do. But I think we're missing the boat, and I don't have the answer just yet. But Doug, to Mike, to all of us, even those sitting out here tonight and those that may be watching by TV, we've got to find a way to get a better grasp of what we're facing. I've got a five-year-old and a 13-year-old. And the five-year-old is going to see a lot change before he graduates high school. So, I'm open to suggestion. This may be more of a plea to anybody out there that would come and help us out in this. We're definitely open to anything. But, you know, this Highway 99 is 12 years overdue, in my opinion. I've been here 12 years, and it was planned even then. Front of World Outreach down New Salem on out. That's just one of many, and you all know that. So, as much as it is a concern, it's a plea. But I think we need to sharpen our pencils and really get down to seeing what we can do. Because we don't want to look back 10, 15 years from now and say, man, we had an opportunity and we missed out. So, I just wanted to say, I appreciate you stepping up, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I look forward to what we can do to dig a little deeper, to see what we can do, what's best for our county. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Thank you. Just to kind of address, I mean, both your comments. I mean, there's no easy answer, like you said. And I appreciate both the comments, all the comments that you both made. Something that is coming down the pipeline with any luck. Next fiscal year, we've got money in the budget right now to start up a new long-range transportation plan study. The plan that we have right now was last adopted, I believe, in 2004-ish, right around in that timeframe. There was an amendment made to it in 2006. But even then, that's about, what, 12 years old at this point? The city of Murfreesboro, as you were talking about them, they just adopted theirs just about a year ago. They're updated one. And I know Town of Smyrna updated theirs not too long before that. So, I believe it's our turn now. not too long before that, so, I believe it's our turn, now that we really need to take a look at, uh, just how the growth has happened over the last several years, of course, the comprehensive plan coming along really gave us a, a better idea of how to at least direct some of that growth, we were able to make some changes to the zoning as well, to reduce the density in, in some of the more rural areas of the county, which I think was, was a big help, uh, it's just a start, and I agree with that, uh, but having the long-range transportation plan updated, being able to give us a better idea of where we expect this growth, kind of work in tandem with the comprehensive plan, hopefully give us an idea of where we need to start seeing, you know, new roads be constructed, and maybe at that time, uh, you know, we can even discuss, you know, how do we start funding some of these projects, you know, start getting some of these things constructed, and, you know, it all comes down to money, we all know that, and, uh, so, we try to do the best we can with the money that we have available to be responsible with the, with the funds that we get from property tax, sales tax, and all that, but, uh, I just want you to know, and the commission to know, that, uh, obviously, we, we hear you, and, uh, we are definitely trying our best to, to, to stay ahead of this, it's not an easy task, uh, but we have ideas and things that, uh, hopefully will be implemented here over the next few years, so.
Being on this commission a, a long while, uh, and, and having, uh, serves probably under, uh, three different, uh, planning directors, uh, I, I can honestly say that Doug is, and his staff are more on top of things than, uh, we have been in the past, and it's becoming a challenge to do that, and I would, once again, like to, uh, thank Doug and his staff for all of the work, answering all the questions that we have, answering all the questions that the public has, and still making decisions that sometimes, uh, does not please everyone, um, and that's getting harder and harder to do, to make decisions that makes everybody happy, it's just hard to do, maybe impossible, but thank you, Doug, and you and your staff. Uh, let me say that, uh, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, not Monday, but Tuesday the 29th, uh, due to Memorial Day. Uh, our meeting will start at 9:00 AM, but we have a training class starting at 7:30 AM, and I believe Doug is trying to set up one, uh, that's, will be titled somewhere around, uh, planning and health.
Yeah, if I, and I'll, thank you, I'll, I'll make just a couple of brief comments. Uh, the gentleman will be coming, his name's Mike Thompson, uh, he works, uh, he does some work with the state, but he also works with the Nashville Civic Design Center, um, he and his organization and partnered with the state and the Department of Health, they actually received some fund, funds from the National American Planning Association, called the Planners for Health Grant, it looks at incorporating, it looks at, you know, the health trends in, you know, in Tennessee, you know, kind of where we are as a, as a, just a general populace as far as exercise levels and different things, um, and it kind of looks at that and how the planning environment affects that, and what things we can do from a planning side that can help affect better health, so, this, they did some really, really good work with the funds that they were granted, and, uh, they've developed some training, uh, modules, so to speak, so he's going to come and, and give you a presentation, uh, regarding some of those findings, so, uh, I've heard him give presentations two or three times, good guy, uh, real, I really like talking to him, he's a great guy, but I think you'll find it really interesting.
Very good. Anything else, Doug?
I don't have any.
Mike?
No, sir.
Commissioners? Mike?
I have a topic of suggestion, a suggestion of a topic for, after this training session, perhaps our next one, uh, the fact that you said that our next big move will be a relook and revamp our long-range transportation plan, um, I too have been on the planning commission for several years now, and then when Chip, you said you've been on at 5:00 already, I thought, holy smokes, time flies, because it just seems like yesterday when you were appointed, but, one thing I'm sure we all experience and are very aggravated with, and this is not just in planning of transportation and our school growth, but so many times, the commissioners hit a brick wall of ways, let me rephrase that, we hit a brick wall because we are mandated by certain state laws that prohibit us from doing certain things to raise money, to improve things like transportation, or increasing a development tax, and certain things like that, that because in 1918, Mr. Smith and Mr. Jones passed some law at the Capitol that now prohibits us from making any improvements 100 years later, we always ask why, and we never really get a, a good answer, so, making full circle now, Doug, perhaps if we could find somebody from the state, or an attorney, or somebody trained and skilled at CTAAS, perhaps, that can show us or give us some legal, well, legal's hard to understand, if somebody can speak American to us about the legal ways, how counties can perhaps find other mechanisms or rewrite laws to help us find ways to build better roads, widen our roads, or increase development tax, or add a stormwater fee to fix the drainage issues we have, maybe then we can have a better idea of how to approach the long-range transportation plan in order to be able to raise funds, because the project we saw tonight, if we had the tool in place of, what did we talk, traffic shed, right? That developer would either have had to halt that development at 49 lots, as I remember our schooling from the traffic shed, or he would have had to do the 246 and go ahead and widen from that all the way to 231, right? As I recall how we chatted about that.
That was one option that we talked about during that discussion, yeah.
So, I mean, maybe at some point in time, we got to put that back in play, if we can't find any other ways to raise money to build the roads with a developer's help, because we can't, Jeff said it perfectly, we can't keep going like we're going, because it's, it's going to be over quickly, we're going to have to put a moratorium on something because we can't do what we're continuing to do, so, if, if we can find a way to communicate with our congressmen and our senators and explain to us why we can't change some of these old laws that prohibit us from raising certain taxes or invoking a stormwater fee to help us build some more stuff and improve ingress and egress, that would help, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, here we go, um, it, I would be remiss to not follow up on these comments of, of both you and Commissioner Kush to say, you know, the responsibility really lies with our voters to be educated when they cast their vote for their state legislators, for the rep and for the senate, um, because those are the folks, it's very easy for you as a voter to vote based on rhetoric, when you hear no new taxes, all they've done is pass the hard job and the hard decisions back on us at the local community, and then they point to us as the bad guys for raising taxes, when in reality, our only option is to raise property taxes because of how the laws are written, so, it's really full circle, back to the voter in knowing what they're voting for, who they're voting for, and how all this is tied together, so, I have been an advocate for quite some time for our state legislator to find some way for the state to give us funds to help us build schools. 75% of the entire budget of Rutherford County, 75 cents of every dollar that you pay in as a, as a property owner goes towards education, and $0 of that comes from the state to build schools, they help us operate the schools, they help us function them, but they build nothing towards bricks and mortar, and so, that is, that is why you're having trouble, if we had, you know, even a partnership with them, if they would do some matching funds, we'd have more dollars freed up to build roads and do some of the other infrastructure improvements, so, this is on the voters, be educated, talk to these folks when you get ready to cast your vote, find out exactly where they stand, and don't let them feed you rhetoric and let that be their only answer, make them give you solutions.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Allen, just to put that in, in, uh, dollars and cents, um, our proposed budget, at least the original draft, is about $600 million, $600 million, and 500, 450 million of that would be for schools and schools alone, 75% of every tax dollar that we raise goes towards education, that leaves very little else for school, for, uh, roads and, uh, police and fire protection and safety types of things, so, um, I heard some school comments and overcrowding, it's, it's hard to stay on top of that as well, we're spending a lot of money, uh, and we'll continue to spend a lot of money, it looks like. Okay, uh, I guess we're done, uh, once again, thank you for your, um, uh, participation in, in tonight's process, uh, and reminder that our next meeting, uh, will be at 9:00 AM, uh, on the 29th, in the Planning Mass, we're adjourned.